Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council Workshop for September to set our agenda for October. Tonight, I'm going to ask Mark Adkins to do our prayer and Tom Rose, if you'll lead us in the pledge. You'll stand with us, please.
Father, we come to you this afternoon, Lord, just thanking you for all the blessings in life that you give us each and every day, Father. We do thank you for the rain that we've had recently, but, Lord, there's a lot of rain coming from the south into the areas that family and friends live in. And, Father, we just pray for their protection and their safety, especially in Florida as it moves up to Tennessee. Father, we just watch over everybody, watch over all of us, and those that take care of those people that are in stress, Father, the first responders, police, fire, emergency people, Father, we just know that their hands are going to be pretty full. Go with us now as we deliberate the business of the town. Forgive us where we fail you. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
[Inaudible]
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Tom. So, items for discussion. First is public comment. The town's public comment period should be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the town council or a border committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to the town's public comment policy. Speakers are limited to three minutes, but additional comments may be submitted in writing. Amber, any public comments tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. We'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Homeland Security relative to the police department overtime pay and capital projects purchases. Hey, Jason.
Mayor and Council, this is our reoccurring grant with the THSO highway safety. And it comes up every year. Usually it's divided into overtime and then part of the grant is part of overtime. Others for equipment and supplies for highway enforcement and safety. This year, as you can see, it's $75,000. And as I said before, it will be split into two different categories, one for overtime and the other for equipment for the traffic division.
Questions for Chief on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item three, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Bonnet's for removal and installation of the new carpet in the golf course clubhouse. Scott, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The contract for this agenda item in your packet is for the replacement of the carpet in the golf course clubhouse. This capital project has been approved in the fiscal year 25 budget. It's an omni-cooperative purchase that will come in under the approved budget, and we ask that the council approve for the mayor to sign this contract.
You didn't even wait for how to get cold before you started replacing stuff.
Any questions?
I was thinking he came in and it was under budget.
Any questions? Okay, so how nervous were you tonight?
When I got up here, I was more nervous than I was sitting back there.
Sitting back there? Well, you've done great, so...
Now you know how she feels on hole number one when she's standing there.
Oh, no, I don't care. You've done good. So, you've gotten the first time having to present before us over with. So, but I don't think we have any questions.
The only thing I'm going to mention is when I played in a scramble with Mary Esther, I think we shot three to four under. Played in a scramble with Scott, and what was our score, Scott?
I don't think we can discuss that, but it was 21 under.
21 under, I think, yeah.
I think y'all cheesed.
No, we do. We did not. This kind of goes back to what Mary Esther said originally. I don't care.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with KCI Technologies Incorporated to perform consulting services to optimize the payment processing of City Works transactions for Treasury. Carl?
Hi, Mayor and Council. If you remember back to the budget retreat, this was a topic of discussion. We worked with City Works. They recommended KCI, which is a consulting firm that they use to help do configuration in their systems. We've been through any number of iterations with them, but think we've arrived at the right solution to move this forward. So, we're asking for the ability for the mayor to sign this contract.
You all will remember, this was one of the things that Treasury said they were having trouble. It was just taking extra time. They were doing multiple things, multiple inter and multiple times. So, I'm glad to see that we've come up with hopefully something that we can figure it out.
Yeah, very hopeful. And then the other thing that I think that we'll get out of this is that firm will be able to really take a good look at our system and make recommendations for do we need to further enhance it, maybe move to the service product, or, you know, how we best move forward as we continue now.
And Jeff, and when Dave gets here, that's one of the things I don't want departments to be concerned about bringing to us. If it's something that's going to make the job easier, and it's within our power and within the budget, it's definitely something that we want to make sure that we're making things easy for our staff as well as for citizens. So, don't hesitate to bring us those ideas. Okay, we'll put this on the agenda.
Thank you.
Carl? Item five is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Baseline Sports Construction LLC to resurface the basketball and pickleball courts at Lee Victory Recreation Park and Hilltop Rosenwald Park.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We bid this project out on September 10th of this year, and the scope included resurfacing basketball courts at Lee Victory Park. There's two of those. And then the basketball courts slash pickleball courts over at Hilltop Park. We had two of the three bidders really didn't fill their information outright, but the one that did is a good company out of Knoxville and Chattanooga. We consult with them fairly often just about courting sports courts and that type of thing. So, this is in our fiscal year capital project list, and it is slightly under budget, which is a good thing. And I know we get a lot of calls about Hilltop Park on the paving and things like that. So, we're excited to get this done. It is a 45-day project, but it is contingent on weather. You need about a straight week to get this done. So, just be aware of that. The total cost is $56,300.
Went down to pick up my race packet, and there were some people on the pickleball court, and they made sure to let me know that there were cracks in the one at Hilltop.
Yes, ma'am. They were last coated in 2017. Those cracks will reappear. They always do unless you repave. But I think, you know, for the most part, they'll go away and be smaller.
Okay.
So, you said there's like a five-day window to get this done? So, are you looking at like now in the wintertime or spring, or what do you anticipate?
As soon as the contracts approve, we're going to give them a notice to proceed, and hopefully they'll knock it out before winter. If you don't get it before mid-November, you won't get it till maybe May. Depends on get a good run of weather. It needs to be 60 and rising. Notice the time to put that down.
Okay. But we're trying.
We're going after it. And they say they got it on the schedule to do it, too. We told them our timeline. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Okay. Item six, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with Jigsaw Consulting Firm to perform legislative updates and lobbying efforts on behalf of the town of Smyrna. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council. As you're familiar with, Jigsaw is a consulting firm that provides insight to pending legislation in Tennessee House and Senate, as well as continuous communication opportunities with legislators. We've utilized them for several years. Also, they usually present at our budget retreat as well. This, keep in mind, this is a five-year agreement. However, there is the ability for either party to terminate the agreement within 30-day notice. So, at any point, if the town decides it wants to move a different direction, you can do that.
And they're maintaining their price?
Yes, same costs per month.
Okay. Any questions? We'll put that on the agenda. And item seven is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number three for the one-hour lift station. Hey, Mike?
Hello, how are you?
Great.
Good. So, this is change order number three. So, what happened? There's four pumps in the lift station. It had originally been planned to put a rail system in where it had a hoist on it. You could lift the pump over, pull it to where the portal is, put a crane down, pull the pumps out. Ceiling's too low and the pumps are too big. So, they had to individually fabricate something for each pump to be able to pull them up out of the bowl and move them if we have to get them out.
Questions? Did I get it? Yeah, I got it. Questions for Mike on the change order?
Where's the one-hour lift station?
Sam Ridley right behind. You know where Thornton's is? It's very close to Thornton's back in the edge of the woods. It's the one that Nissan hits.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a three-year agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for the Utilities Department, GIS Software.
This is our three-year agreement with Esri for GIS. Current agreement expires in December, and this is pro-rated between different departments in the town.
Any questions on this? Okay, we'll move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a five-year agreement with UniFirst for uniforms.
So, our current agreement with UniFirst expires this December. So, we've been in talks with them, negotiating with them on upgrading the uniforms. It's basically for everyone except for fire and police. They've agreed to, and this is through Sourcewell, who did all the bidding and does all the cooperative agreement. So, what they've agreed to, there will be no annual increase over the five years. They'll hold the cost the same, waive all the setup fees and for the initial setup, any printing, anything like that. And we will also receive one free month each year, which will be taken in January.
Okay. Questions on this? Are we changing any of the uniforms, or are they pretty much staying?
Most people stayed similar. We made some changes in utilities, especially for field personnel. We've gone to the high-vis class-two shirts to get them out of the vest because in the summer, it's just unreal hot. So, we've made some changes there. A little bit different style of pants. They're the rip-on pants, which are more flexible, more durable. So, most of the departments stay pretty similar, though.
Other questions? Okay, item 10 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomason Hutton for the reuse tank project.
Yep. This is in the capital budget for this year, and this is the one where Brian and I had met with Motlow and MTSU, and they wanted to partner with us to put logos on the tank. I think Mr. Peach is working with them. We're going to set up a meeting with them. We can go ahead and do the design on this thing. If we don't hurry, it's going to be too late this year because we can't do this during the summer because we feed the golf course. So, we've got a short window here. If we don't go to construction this year, I'll put it in next year's budget, and we'll do the construction part next year.
I actually had been approached from MTSU saying it's already in their budget. They're ready to move forward, so...
I contacted Mr. Ottman, and Mr. Winton, Mr. Ottman's going to put together a time for us three to get together, but I've not heard back just yet with his scheduling.
With Andrews? Okay, he's the one that approached me, so...
Yeah, we've talked, but he wanted to schedule a Zoom meeting. We haven't been able to, he hasn't been able to do that yet.
Okay.
I believe they had kind of agreed in principle on what their contribution was going to be. We just need what they want on the tank.
What the design?
Yeah, things like that.
And Ben has already put together an agreement.
Okay. And who is, who's the Motlow rep?
Gary Wynn.
Okay. Okay, then we will get that on the agenda. And item 11 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SNW Contracting to install flashing yellow permissive arrow signals at signalized intersections along Old Nashville Highway. More of these yellow lights.
Yes, ma'am. More of these yellow lights, just like we're following the TDOT standard now, which is the flashing yellow arrow to indicate that people can still turn, make turn, make that permissive left, not a protected left, but a permissive left when it is clear for people to make that left turn. We're looking to put these, make these upgrades at intersections of Old Nashville Highway and Pioneer, Hazelwood, Old Nashville and Rocky Fork, Enon Springs, Rock Springs, and Genie Lane.
Questions on this?
Are we going to have more of these on other roads? This is just for the Old Nashville Highway?
Yeah, this is just for this fiscal year. So, we did several, mostly on like Lowry Street and Sam Ridley last year. This can be focused on Old Nashville Highway. And I think we still have about, I'll say 12, or about 12 more intersections that we're going to be doing over the next couple more years.
Okay. I know this may sound crazy, but I've had people ask me, what does that mean? What can I, you know, how can I proceed with that? Is there any, does TDOT have any sort of video, or is there anybody that has any sort of video that we might could put on?
Yeah, we can reshare it. We shared it when it burst in and in, so, yeah, we can reshare it.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay. Item 12 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with TDOT to allow the town of Smyrna to access the SmartView cameras.
This is a no-cost contract we have to do every year, so we have access to the TDOT cameras. Again, it doesn't cost us any money. It's just an agreement between us and the TDOT.
Questions on this? Okay, item 13, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems for the software maintenance on our Centract software.
Okay, our Centract software that runs our traffic signals. So, in our traffic operations center, that's the software we use to run that. TDOT does have, as you know, has the I-24 smart corridor project, which goes partly through Smyrna along Lowry Street. And so, they pay for, they pay in bundles of 50. So, TDOT had agreed to pay for the first 50 lights. We've got about 54, so we have to buy the next group above that 50 and pay for that ourselves. So, this is a contract with the same company that TDOT pays, Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems, for those additional traffic lights that are on our system, are going to be on our system.
Questions? Questions?
I got a question. And this may, this may be a question for Mr. King, but do we know yet if we're there or will there not? Or is there a chance there will be a signal at Jefferson Pike and Old Jefferson Pike? As of right now, no signal.
Yeah, it's not part of the widening project at this time.
I've had a couple of people this week ask me about that. Also whether there was gonna be an acceleration lane going across and towards town. I knew that TDOT did not have that in their plan, but it has come up. So I don't know if they're watching tonight. I wanted to ask the question just to get clarification about those items.
As far as the intersection Jefferson and Old Jefferson, that is something that we, once construction is complete and traffic gets back to normal through that area, we could do a traffic study on that to see if it trips the warrants for a traffic light there. Because I have had requests before. There's, it does become difficult turning out of there. Fortunately, with the widening, we are going to have a center turn lane for people to come out and turn into that to wait and make their.
Stripe that? Will they stripe that or?
Yeah, is that gonna be raised or do you know if that's a raised median?
It is raised, don't they?
So, yeah, that section does have the raised median in it.
It looked like the, looked like they were working on the intersection in front of Ace Hardware. Looked like they were putting that turn lane in probably.
They started grading pretty heavily, it looks like.
So there'll be a right turn lane coming off of Nissan going on to Jefferson.
No, we won't have a right turn. Yeah.
So what were they doing today?
Yeah, that's.
That's as far as their project. They're cleaning up, they're just cleaning up their lay-down yard.
Okay. Okay, other questions?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Item 14, consideration of an ordinance amending the town's stormwater ordinance in order to comply with the new Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation requirements, and this is a second reading.
So to keep complying with the TDEC revisions to the stormwater and meet our NPDS requirements, they made some changes. We've revised our stormwater ordinance, working with Ben Gross on that. And also some of our supporting documents. Some of the changes include stream buffer with requirements, different calculations for stormwater, for water quality treatment volumes, additional outreach to the community, and additional enforcement for stormwater violations.
Any questions on this? Okay, item 15 is consideration of an ordinance relative to a budget amendment for fiscal year 2425 for the Rock Springs Road improvements for Mabel Farms, from Mabel Farms to Cooks Lane, and this is a second reading.
Mayor and council, yes, this is what we brought forth the last workshop and council meeting, just for the second reading to making a budget amendment so we can begin design on that section of roadway.
Questions for Charles on this section that we added when we kind of started talking about that area? Okay, then item 16 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute amendment number two with TDOT relative to the state Route 266, which is Sam Ridley Parkway, the intersection at Old Nashville Highway.
This amendment extends the date of the contract we have with TDOT from November the 30th of '24 to December 31st of '26. Because we're looking like an 18-month construction time. We have gotten final approval of the plans and the bid book is in works and the estimate has been accepted by TDOT. So we're just waiting for the notice to proceed to construction to put it out to bid.
Okay. Questions for Charles? Item 17 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Gresham Smith for survey and conceptual design for the Rock Springs Road at Old Nashville Highway Intersection Project.
Right, this is just start the survey and conceptual design so we can go in and get the survey to find out what utilities and work on our lineage. We broke it up into two phases. Phase one, we're just gonna go from Needham Drive to Austin Lee. And from there, we'll see if we can get the lanes back down to three lane by the time we get to Austin, or if we need to take it on out to Cedar Grove Road, which the original traffic study indicated that need to go out that far.
Other, or any questions for Charles?
Yeah. How long will this take?
This is gonna take a while just to get through the utilities.
So we won't have an overlap between the two projects there as far as they're under construction?
No.
Finish the other one and then ready to start this?
Right, this one, yeah, like I said, if we can get the, that's why we've been waiting to bring this one on. We should be nearing, but you never know with the TDOT when they'll raise that money. But this one's gonna take a lot of design work and plus starting the utility moves and those relocations. So it's gonna be a slow process.
Do we have any grants or anything to help with this? Or is it straight out of our budget?
It's gonna be straight out at this time. Otherwise, I'm afraid would take, the timing would be so long on it like it has been on Sam Ridley.
Is there right-of-way that has to be purchased or we already have it?
There's gonna be some right-of-way. Like I said, we're gonna get up into sidewalks. So there is gonna be some right-of-way, try and get the double left off Old Nashville onto Rock Springs. And then Rock Springs itself, we're looking at putting double lefts on both legs a bit onto Old Nashville. So it's gonna be tight and then special with the utilities and that are there.
Other questions?
Sounds like we have ample right-of-way there.
It's, it's gonna be tight.
It sounds like, I mean, that's, that's a lot of addition right in there.
Right. So it's gonna be pushing the sidewalks back. Some of it, we do have additional on Rock Springs that the right-of-way is further out there. But we have that one massive utility pole on that corner that could really hinder.
On the Turk side? No.
No, it's on the vacant lot side, so it has, you know, power going both ways on it. So it, everything hits that one pole, it seems like. So that one's gonna be tough to work around.
Other questions for Charles? Okay, item 18 is consideration of an ordinance to amend municipal code titled 12 Building and Utility Codes, Chapter 4 Mechanical Code. Hey, Christie.
Hey.
How are you?
Thank you, ma'am. Very well, how are you doing? Great, good, good. This is a, an amendment to the mechanical code that would require permanent steps or pulldowns when there's equipment located in an attic or if the equipment is on the roof and it's more than 16 feet high, it will require permanent form of access.
Okay, questions for Christie on this?
This is residential and commercial?
Yes, residential and commercial.
Okay, other questions?
Does this, is there like a grandfather in for this? This is all new things going forward that this will apply to?
Our plan is to, we've already been notifying contractors that this is coming up. And after it's approved, it'll be the permits that are pulled. There'll be a slight grace period. I mean, we're not, but I think most of the contractors understand why we're doing this.
Other questions? Okay. Item 19 is appointment of one member to the Parks Board to serve an unexpired term ending in 2025. Ashley Lester sent a letter letting us know that her job requirements had changed and so she was not gonna be able to serve on the Parks Board. And so if there's someone out there that still would like to apply, you are welcome to go on the town, what, no?
No, no, you're fine.
Oh, I thought you were telling me something. You're welcome to go on the town website and apply for the Parks Board with a term ending in 2025. And I think we currently have five applications that we've gotten so far. Okay. Anything under other tonight before? Kevin, anything? Scott, anything? No, you don't wanna come back up? Okay. Oh, look who does. Surprise, surprise. Surprise.
She knows you're here.
I know. It's been a while, but just wanted to give you an update. Genie Lane, they finished the permanent markings today. So other than just some punch list items, the project is complete.
Great.
And Spring Hill Drive, that project, we've gotten it into just binder and we'll leave it like that until a home builder, which they should be starting this fall. And then we'll come back and research it. But it is open between Spring Hill and the schools.
A lot of paving going on too in the last few weeks, right?
Yes, that's Tom's paving projects that, been out there. Yeah, they've really been getting a lot of done.
We.
Tom gets credit for all that right now.
I've had a lot of people, very complimentary of Old Nashville Highway. I mean, I know they weren't real happy when it was being done, but they're happy, hopefully it's like childbirth. They've forgotten what it was like while we were paving it and are just happy with now that it's here.
Yeah, that Rock Springs Road is nice too.
Yeah.
It needed it bad as well.
Questions for Charles while he's here? Okay, Carl? Rex? You did.
Just to let you know, the auditors have been in and we're just about to finish with the fill work phase of the audit. And our budgeting software for next year is open and available for department heads to start inputting into the budget.
Okay, questions for Rex? Thanks, Rex. Mike?
Another curve, right?
Uh huh.
I know Mr. Peach sent you guys the list of emergency purchases for utilities. Again, no votes required. It's to meet the requirements of the audit. But if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Questions for Mike on it?
Ball's gonna win.
Open date, we're gonna watch Georgia and Alabama beat up on each other.
I had disregarded that tie. I don't know if you noticed that.
Oh, I noticed right away.
She really didn't.
Thank you, sir. Christie? Tom? Mike? Tom? Chief? Heather? Chief?
The boss. Goes somewhere else.
He's supposed to rub it in, doesn't he? Amber?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Heather gave me the census slide tonight. So just wanna remind everybody that the census is still taking place, our special census. I know we've been, as of late, getting a lot of calls through utility inserts that have gone out where people are receiving that notice through their utility bills. We have almost completed, or we have completed counting the school forms that had come in. So at this point, the mailers will be going out, not just in your utility inserts through the month of October, but also in the regular mail. You will also get a tri-fold census that you can complete, fold back up, pop right back in the mail, and it'll come back to us. No postage is necessary. So this census will be going on through the rest of this year. And then at the beginning of the year, any responses that we haven't received from certain households, we're gonna hand that over to Chief Bill and have him go out and start knocking on those doors to try to get those people counted. So if you could, keep them from having to go to so many houses. Jump online, fill that out through our website at townofsmyrna.org. Or you can call into the administration office at 615-267-5005. We only ask for three pieces of information. We need your street number and name, so your complete address, the number of people living in your home, regardless of age. We'll take infants all the way to college aged kids that are at school. And then the full name of each resident, so first and last name. And that's all of the information that we need in order to get you counted. So if you haven't taken care of that yet, go ahead and take care of that today.
Great. Jeff?
Well, that is not my slide, but okay.
That's the, that's the in-between. They let me know that.
Well, I was gonna advertise for the census in case. Make sure you fill that out. So the first one here, so Councilman Sullivan, Councilman Short, Councilwoman Peebles, and Mayor Reed and several staff attended the Cumberland Region Tomorrow Power of Ten Summit that they have annually. The Power of Ten brings together experts, policymakers, and community leaders to explore innovative transit solutions. And the ten is the 10-county region around middle Tennessee. So that was an informative meeting and a lot of discussions about things that are going in and around Nashville currently transportation-wise. Next, congratulations to Officer Godby upon his selection as the Grand Marshal for the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry. Officer Godby has been with Smyrna Police Department since 2000. We're happy that Officer Godby was recognized for his contributions to the police department and the K9 community. Just to note that the Rotary Club sponsors the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry and proceeds benefit community projects. Lastly, and I'm sure you're gonna talk about that, there's not a slide for this, but just ask folks to check in with our, our social media as the, as we're looking towards this bad weather that's coming towards us. Obviously, our thoughts and prayers go out to those that are gonna be struck with it first there in Florida and Georgia. But if the model continues to track the way that it is, we will have some substantial wind and rain. And so it should be around Friday evening, I believe. But it'll, it should start later this evening, I think. That's it.
Ben?
I have anything?
Markel?
Okay, two slides, reading ends the schools day. Thank you to Ms. Monica and Ms. Heidi for the invitation to read at Cedar Grove Elementary. I visited several of the classes and there are pictures there. And also several other council members also participated, as well as town of Smyrna staff. So I think it was a good day had by all and thanks to everyone who participated. Let's see, secondly, Asian Cultural Heritage Day. So we celebrated the first Asian Cultural Heritage Day at the SOAC a couple of weeks ago. And as a part of this celebration, an invitation was extended and the staff of the Consulate General of the Republic of Indonesia came from Houston to participate in our cultural day. It was a day of programs, of food, of fellowship. I think there were several different vendors and booths that were there, and it was about a half-day program. And I was honored just to be able to stand in for Mayor Reed, who was asked to provide the welcome but was not able to attend. And so it was just a good day had by all. So I appreciate being able to participate. And hopefully this will become an annual event. And that's all I have.
Chief?
Does somebody have car show and depot days?
I do.
Okay, very good, very good. I have a food truck. Join us for dinner on Wednesday, October 9th for food trucks at Cedarstone Park. Bring out the family, purchase some good food from the food trucks, listen to some music and play some yard games. Food trucks offering barbecue, ice cream, and sandwiches. Or did they have ice cream sandwiches? Mike, didn't y'all have one of these last night?
Yeah.
How did it, how did it go?
It was pretty good. It's the first one we've had in a while. So it was a cool night, so the Italian ice guy didn't do very well. The food truck did all right.
This doesn't have it, but it was five to seven, is that correct?
Yeah, they didn't stay until about eight fifteen because there were some prices out there and they waited for them to leave. So.
I had intentions of coming and I got busy outside and I looked up and it was 6:45 and I didn't come. Should've gone anyway.
Yes, it was good food.
Very good. Okay, also have slide number two, Mapleview Cemetery Autumn Cleanup. Mapleview Cemetery Autumn Cleanup dates are October 1st through October 15th. Please note that all holiday specialty faded, broken, or deteriorated items will be removed during the cleanup dates. All items that are removed are discarded. The only way to ensure personal items are not removed and discarded is to take them off before the cleaning period and bring them back afterwards. The town of Smyrna is not responsible for anything removed during cleaning. To ensure personal items are not removed and discarded, please remove, remove the items before the cleaning period begins and return them after October 16th. Is there a reason y'all gave me the cemetery one?
I think it's very fitting.
I would say because you're the closest, but.
Jerry's the oldest, I mean. Jerry's the oldest, I mean. Ah, I don't know. Does anybody have a love where you live litter thing, guys, cows?
It's all yours.
She, all you.
It's all mine. Love where you live, do not litter. You know, we still have, as we've talked about before, we have certain citizens who go out and pick up a lot of trash. And they are always encouraging us to pick up our neighborhoods. But the first place we start is just by not throwing it out there in the first place. One of the things I see a lot of times is people are going to the dump and they don't secure it in the back of their vehicle and it blows out all over. Well, I see it on Sam River Parkway the most. But, you know, we need to take responsibility for our own community. Another way we can take responsibility for our own community is to shop local because that helps to keep our tax rate low. Good luck to everybody over the next day or so. I had heard, Jeff, it was gonna start raining tonight and blowing all night long and tomorrow.
Yes. Said the worst part would be in the morning, probably, wind wise.
Right, right. So everybody be safe. Be kind while you're being safe.
When will we make a decision on the car show? I mean, I know car shows are events, Sima is, the Depot Days.
It's not looking well right now. Mike Moss and I spoke today and we were looking at in the morning that we were going to try to as soon as possible.
Make a decision.
And the contingency plan, obviously, is for the following Friday and we'll put that out at the town center, but that's probably what we were looking at. It was kinda just saying if it was gonna track to the right a little bit, just to see.
Have we heard, I know Sima is saying rain or shine. Has anybody heard any other update? Is it?
Have you heard from him this afternoon or anything?
No, but I know I'll be touching base with him in the morning. I mean, Jeff and I talked.
Will you come that way, those that are, because I've had some people ask?
Yes.
I think with the weather, we were supposed to have a couple of weeks ago. It never got here. We're all kinda waiting as long as we can. I do know Sima has been talking to their board a little bit. I know H U knows this, but they said rain or shine today, but we can't put people in harm's way with high winds or something like that. Luckily, in the Depot District, most of that is asphalt and concrete. So if there's a chance it wasn't gonna rain, you can go. It's not like you're at Halloween in the Park. We got a lot of grass. So I think we wait till the morning. I'll try to contact them tonight on the way home to see if there's any updates as well. But I know for a fact we'll be talking in the morning.
One thing I did discuss with them was the logistical nightmare of rescheduling it. It's not really the kind of event that you can do that because you've got vendors and also the performers, the music events and such as that, have different things planned for the next week. So it would be very difficult.
It would be. One thing I did do, I did pull the next two weeks of our park schedule just to see what gaps we had. I can tell you the buildings downtown are all rented by separate people, so it would be five to ten different rentals. But I did look at some options if they said, hey, we wanna go next week or two, what we might could do. But it is the front, you know, next week's front end of fall break. I know people got things going on. But just in case they come back with an alternative, at least we'll be prepared to deal with that. I checked the event center schedule, park schedule, and just in case.
Other questions for Mike, who is up here? Thanks, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll have all that out on our social media for, once we hear. Obviously, Friday night is our event and Saturday night is Sima's event, but we'll let you all know. Oh, Tim, sorry. We're just moving on.
Still here.
Sorry. And we hate you leaving.
Thank you. I do have a slide tonight. Smyrna Fall Farmers Market begins Saturday, October fifth, and runs through Saturday, November twenty-third at Gregory Mill Parks. Come out and enjoy the Fall Farmers Market. That's it.
Good?
Good.
Good. Jerry?
Okay, I think I have some slides. The Smyrna Sister City Program has a few open spots that we'd like to fill. And if you know of anybody or you have a child that either goes to school here in Smyrna or you live in Smyrna and would like to travel to Japan and also learn about new cultures and meet new friends, we would love to talk to you. And I talked with a young man this week and he, his mom didn't know about it, had a younger or an older sister. So she said we'd love to have her there as well. So even if you don't have anyone in your family, if you know of someone that might be interested, let them know about it. And all you've gotta do is go to the townofsmyrna.org and you can learn more about the program. I think we've got three openings. And so we wanna fill those here in the next several months so we can get ready to travel to Japan. Second one here, we've got a couple of things coming up for Halloween on Friday night, and Saturday, October the eleventh and twelfth at SOAC. There's gonna be an event. And there's, from six to eight is the non-scare hours and a kid zone. And then we've got from eight to ten, we have the scare hours. And then on October the twenty-sixth at Sharp Spring Park, which is always a fun event, we have Halloween in the Park from three to eight thirty that evening. The Parks and Recreational Department's looking for craft vendors, businesses and groups that are interested in promoting their organization at Halloween in the Park. If you're interested in a booth, please contact the Parks and Rec Department at six one five four five nine nine seven three three. And one more thing I want to let you know. The, I've got two fantastic daughter-in-laws and I'm proud of both of them. And I've got one, Shelby Short. And Shelby is a school teacher. She's a mom. She teaches college classes and just has a full plate. And in the meantime of that, she was going to school to further her education and her name, as of two o'clock today, changed from Shelby Short to Dr. Shelby Short.
Ah.
So I'm very excited about that. That's it.
Good. Congratulations, Shelby.
Thank you.
Steve?
All right, I've also got a couple of slides. Nine eleven, the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office held a rememorative ceremony. And we had several officers attend as we were participants and to remember the heroes of that day and may they remain in our hearts so that we never forget. So this is, obviously, every year this comes in. And I remember this year, this year, I don't know why, but I was recalling with my wife what I was doing that day. And it, just kinda every year, it kinda brings back that whole flood of emotions that we felt. So I hope we don't ever forget that feeling. And slide number two was Reading in Schools Day. We actually had a lot of attendees. We read to Mayor Esther, Mayor Mayor Esther, Councilwoman Raquel Peebles and myself, Todd Spearman, Assistant Town Manager, Police Chief Jason Irvin, Captain James Scott, Officer Jonathan Beverly, Firefighter Zach Walter, Firefighter Dellen Echols, Firefighter Jeremy, oh, Lieutenant Jeremy Stokes. Visited area schools and read to students. We visited Smyrna Primary, John Coleman, Cedar Grove, Stewart's Creek, and Thurman Francis Arts Academy. So a lot of, a lot of kids got read to. Special thanks to all the faculty and staff and the thank you to the students for their active participation and enthusiasm. Reading in Schools Day is an annual event where elementary schools in Rutherford County host volunteers to read in their classrooms throughout the day. If it's something you would like to do, next year they'll have one and I'm sure they would encourage all the volunteers they can get. We, I was at Thurman Francis and Thurman Francis had Dr. Gagne, the principal there, allowed the students to wear pajamas so that they could be more comfortable while reading. So the school was all in their pajamas, which was interesting. I did not. Mayor Esther did though.
Some of the schools that I were at did pajamas. Some of them did storybook characters. They would dress up like a storybook character. So different ones did different things.
Yeah. And I think that's all I have.
Great.
I too have a couple of slides. The first one is about the Twenty-Sixth Annual Special Olympic State Championship that was held at the Smyrna Golf Course recently. More than a hundred and twenty athletes competed to qualify for the National Special Olympics. This is by far our favorite golf event every year. Joanne Drumright and her staff do an excellent job running this event. This is actually Hal's last Special Olympics State Championship as he will retire in October. And of course, Scott's already here tonight. He'll be taking over. And there you see Scott, Hal, and Joanne. On the second slide, we discussed this already a little bit about the car show. This is a weather watch event right now. So there's the information. It would, if the weather permits, take place Friday, this Friday, at the Depot District Car Show from six to eight thirty. Classic cars, bikes, customs are welcome. Lineup is at five forty-five for those participating. The first seventy-five cars will be in the show. If you're seventy-six, you won't get in the show, so make sure you get there. Saturday, September twenty-eighth for Depot Days from ten to four. That's a big weekend going on downtown. Depot Days will offer more than one hundred vendors showcasing showcasing an array of goods, culinary creations, and crafts. And throughout the weekend, the main stage at the Train Depot will be a focal point of a lot of music and entertainment. So this is one of the town's biggest and most well-attended events. So if you get a chance, weather permitting, you don't wanna miss this. It's a lot of fun. Couple other things. I know your dad is feeling a little under the weather, so we wanted to send good wishes out to Coon for feeling better in his recovery. Also, I read where Tony Campbell had been hospitalized a little bit. So Tony, if you're watching, we wish you well. Hope you're recovering. Kevin Arnold, our former police chief, has been to the hospital a little bit and I think he's doing better. I've talked to him this past week and it sounds like he's recuperating a little bit, but wanna wish Kevin Arnold some fast recovery. A good friend of mine, Gary Barnes, lost his father. Bill Barnes died last, a little over a week ago. His funeral was last week. So we wanna send our condolences out to Gary and Ken and Dale, the brothers. Ms. Barnes has been deceased for several years. And Bill was a good man. He served in the military, in the Air Force, for a lot of years and his family moved around the Philippines and places like that with him. So I told Gary today, I talked to him and I saw him at the funeral and told him I wanted to say a few words about Bill tonight and he thanked me for that. Gary was a longtime employee of the town. He's about thirty, give or take, years there, Mike. You might know better than I do. So I don't know if Gary's watching, but condolences to the Barnes family for the loss of their father. The last good news I have is my wife and I celebrated forty-three years a little over a week ago, all in a row. So forty-three year anniversary and just wanna acknowledge and let people know that we celebrated our forty-third. We are happily going for forty-four. So love you, honey, and we'll talk to you everybody soon. Back to you.
Thank you. Our Top Gun Night Run was held Friday night. It was a great event. It was our fifth annual and it was a huge success. It was our largest Top Gun Run ever. We had seven hundred and seventy-seven runners and we netted more than ninety thousand dollars for the upkeep and maintenance of the memorial and for our Captain Jeff Coos Scholarship. I wanna say thank you to all of the staff, the volunteers, the runners, the spectators, the vendors, and the sponsors. And we are really looking forward to twenty twenty-five because it will be our sixth Top Gun Night Run and we are really looking to do some exciting things for that sixth one. We wanna say thank you to Hunter Industrial Fans for your generous fan donation. We're grateful for your support in helping us keep cool while we work to keep Smyrna safe. So thank you to Hunter Fans. They also were sponsors of the run this year. They had the cooldown zone. We want you to save the date for the town's annual Christmas Parade tradition. It is a little different this year than in the past. It's usually been that first Sunday in December, but because that falls on our Thanksgiving weekend, we've had to move it to the next one because of staffing issues for the actual parade with our people being out of town. So it'll be the Forty-Ninth Annual Town of Smyrna Christmas Parade and Food Drive, and it'll be held on Sunday, December eighth, at two P M. on Lowry Street. And the town's accepting applications for entries in this year's parade. Organizations wishing to participate may complete the application online or in person here at Town Hall. In addition to enjoying the parade, we invite you to make a difference in our community by donating to our Christmas Parade Food Drive. Town personnel will be collecting non-perishable food items from spectators along the route. And I will tell you that the food bank tells us that between what the fire department does and what the town does, it helps them to get through the year in feeding those neighbors of ours here who need a little extra help. So, let's see, I think I wrote something down. Oh, oh, I've got, I think I hit everything. So anything else, counsel? Nothing else, and we're adjourned.